Going to go ahead and call this May 1st, 2017, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks everyone for coming again this evening. And we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask William Heilmann to lead us tonight.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, William. We'll move on to item three on our agenda, which is our annual audit report. This evening's report will be for our fiscal year '15, and I'd like to welcome Angela Holmes of Denning Downey &amp; Associates.
Hi, John.
How you doing?
My name's Bob Denning with the Denning Downey CPAs. I'm pleased to present the financial statements for the city of Whitefish for the year ended June 30th, 2016. Angela did all the heavy lifting on this audit, so I'm not going to take their credit, but I would like to pass on some things that I've noticed. Dana Smith has been doing a wonderful job here at the city from an accounting standpoint, and we're pleased with her work. And I think that shows in the financials and the lack of comments. So, I would personally like to thank Dana for all your hard work and making this look easy. Turn it over to Angela. Thank you again.
Thanks. Thanks very much.
Hi. So, thanks Dana. You were wonderful first in the audit. So, this was the fiscal year '16 audit, and we conducted it in accordance with the generally accepted auditing standards, which provide reasonable, not absolute assurance on the financial statements. We didn't have any findings. The only thing we did note was in the quartz, which Dana and I have talked about, she's working on cleaning up, there's some old checks and bonds, both that all need to be taken care of and remitted to the state. And I know you guys are working on getting that all cleaned up. There were a couple minor mistakes that weren't significant to the financial statements. One had to do with OPEB. Me and Dana talked about that. She knows how to fix that going forward. Other than that, your guys' debt, of course, increased with your new bonds, but your capital assets in line also went up, and so did your cash. So, overall, your guys' net position increased over a couple million dollars overall, which is really great. Your guys' cash balance was up over the prior year, like I said. Your water fund has a higher cash balance, 3.5 million versus 2.7 in your sewer fund. Both look great. You guys do have a lot of debt, but on the other side of it, there's the financial, the capital assets that kind of offset that. That's what is helping your net position stay up there. Of course, the net pension liability, again, increased your debt quite a bit, which that's kind of unavoidable. Other than that, everything, I thought, looked wonderful. I audited quite a few departments throughout the city of Whitefish, including parks and recs, the courts, all of that, and I had no comments. Did you guys have any questions at all?
Thanks, Angela. Any questions for Angela? Not seeing any. We'll be adopting this later on in the evening at the end of our agenda. So, thanks for coming tonight. I did want to note a few agenda changes tonight, the first being item 8C, which is the consideration to deny the Randy Dunlop permit for Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore Protection variance. That has been removed at the request of the applicant. I believe we'll hear that on May 15th when he's in town, if I'm not mistaken. And secondly, agenda item 9A. Craig, if I'm correct here, we are going to postpone consideration of awarding the construction contract for the city beach lift station. And so, we'll hear that sometime in the next couple months, I would imagine. With that said, we'll move on to item 3B, which is our presentation from Mike Cronquist, our owner's representative, with an update on our parking structure and city hall project, which is soon to be over.
Soon to be. Mr. Mayor, councilors, I am going to skip the part about what we've got done, and I'm also going to skip whining about the weather tonight. I'm going to go ahead instead and focus on what needs to be done in order to get moved in. In the city hall part, I have a list. It's not all-inclusive, but I'll just run down it and give you kind of a heads-up on where everything is. The entry doors, we're still waiting on the operators, for those handicapped operators, on the entry doors. Those will be done. There's miscellaneous trim that's finishing up still in, like stairwell for one, and miscellaneous trim painting to sides and ends here and there. There's a bit of fluorine here and there on the first floor that still needs to be put in, and that will get in as we kind of work past those areas. The, one of the big items is test and balance, and that is in progress this week. The crews are going through and setting the air flows out and in, the return airs as well. And tomorrow, they'll be working on the water side of that, the hot water and cold water, heating and cooling part of those systems. The fire alarm system is another item that has to be done, ready and operational. They did some testing on it, some drive runs today and tomorrow. The official test with the fire chief and with TAD will be on May 8th. The sprinkler systems, we'll do that at the same time, the flow tests, the tamper switch tests, the flow switch tests and all that stuff. Elevators, they need to be certified. They are operational, but not yet ready for use. That is scheduled for next week, and that is dependent on when we can get an inspector out here and run through all that. It's also dependent, to some extent, on fire alarms being in place and ready to go too. So, all that kind of has to fall together. The lighting controls, that'll be another walk-through, all the automatic lighting in the air, in the city hall parts, the things that are 50% auto-rising and dimming. These, I think everything is working, because everywhere I walk through it, it works as it should, but there will be a formal walkthrough on that. Sidewalks, we're able to get part of the sidewalk along Baker Street done Saturday, which was a big jump. There is still some infill at the entry, which we did not get, and that will happen this week. J2 is on-site today. They showed up. They're moving in the stuff that they are supplying, and I guess they're going to install all that during this week. The canopies are continuing. There's still some work done, or to be done, on the Baker Street side, the canopies. There's, the decking still needs to be put in. There's still some touch-up painting that needs to be done on those as well. Ceiling to bricks, some of the pressure washing has been done, quite a bit of it, not all of it. Ceiling, this is weather-related, I'm afraid. Ceiling to brick is going to be dependent on rain, so that's one item that may not happen until after, after move-in. That can be done in and around regular work hours. Punch list, punch list is something that's going to happen this week. The architect will be over Wednesday, Tuesday and Wednesday, and we'll stay on-site for two or three days, and we'll walk about, do all the interior punch items. The mechanical and electrical punch list will also happen this week. I don't expect to see much on that, though. The, what else? Landscaping, that's probably going to be down the road a little bit. That will be done after move-in. And then miscellaneous exterior touch-up painting will happen after move-in, probably too. On the parking structure, one of the big things is to get the ramps sealed and striped. Today, they started the sealing process, but with infill in the pour-back into joints tomorrow. And Wednesday and Thursday, they will be doing, finished with the washing has been done, so they'll be doing the sealing, the ramp deck itself sealing. Painting is scheduled for next Monday to start to do the striping and the signings and that kind of stuff. The safety railing needs to be installed. The interior lighting needs to be completed. That's very, very close to being done now in the ramp parking. There are some safety railings that still need to be installed. That's not a big issue. That'll be done in the next couple weeks, or next week or so. Brick work is finishing up with little bits left to do there again. That is going to, probably ceiling will be kind of a catch as we can get it between rain, and if we can get it all done, it'll be done. If not, it'll have to wait until probably after move-in. Touch-up on the canopy framing will be another thing. Canopy framing is in progress this week. It should be done either by the end of this week or the first part of next week. Elevators are operational, and those will be tested at the same time city hall. The decorated mullions in the windows are going in now, and those will all be done. After the opening, the things that we may not have done until after opening, the exterior painting, so that'll be a continuing item. That won't affect anything. The ceiling to brick may continue on, decorative screens. And then we get to the retail space. The storefront hardware metal framing will be here, and will be installed in the next couple weeks. The glass itself will not ship until the 22nd of May. So, basically, retail space is something that is more or less on hold for right now. It doesn't affect anything as far as move-in or using the parking structure or any of that kind of stuff. So, that will be done later. If we get to it now, we'll get to it. If it tests, if, but we're not going to stop moving in to do anything on that, because there's nothing really pressing there. The interior work, the sprinklers, ceilings, concrete, this is inside the parking structure I'm talking about, those things are not, the concrete's not in the contract. Sprinklers are in. Ceilings, they'll need to go in. Restrooms are in contract. We won't worry about those for now. Then, of course, the landscaping will be the last thing to finish up in and around the parking structure. And that's it. All we have to do is finish.
Any questions? That's right. Any questions for Mike? Jim?
I realize there's a lot of moving parts, so thank you for tracking all those for us. Could you make sure that on that punch list goes the crossbar frames that are in the garage window openings that are not level? Make sure those get re-level. They're not level. They're put in at an angle. Make sure they get put in, reset.
You're talking about the mullions in there or something else? I will look at it. They'll be, believe me, they'll be level. They'll be plumb and level before we're done.
Good. Thank you.
Further questions or comments for Mike?
Yes.
Richard?
Where are we with, first of all, I'm assuming you have to test and balance after everybody moves in as well. Is that right?
There'll be, yes.
And then where are, where are we with commissioning of the building? We had some discussion. I think we were going to have an independent contractor?
That's what we're doing. That's a test and balance in operating the air handlers, the chillers, the boilers. That's all part of the commissioning of the building system. So, all the operating systems are, is what's being tested, checked out and put in into service.
Okay. Good. I just wanted to make sure that we were still on?
No, we're still on the same page.
Okay.
To Jen's point about moving parts, there are many moving parts on a daily basis, and I just want to thank you, Mike, and especially our staff. I know Craig, Matt, Adam, and of course, you know, Jen and Larry down at the site have been very helpful on a day-to-day basis in answering questions and figuring out some last-minute details that are obviously very important details as we wrap up this project. So, I just wanted to thank everyone for pitching in and getting the job well done. On that note, thanks for the report, Mike.
Okay.
Very much appreciate it. I guess we'll only have one more, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hold you to it. We'll move on to our communications from the public, and this is time set aside for the public to comment on items that are on the agenda but not advertised as a public hearing. Anything you wish to share with the council, just your name and address for the record, please. Jim?
Hi. We're still Jim and Stack and Lisa Stack at 2472 Birch Clem Drive. 22nd update on our project, the office building on Wisconsin Avenue. Since we have another item on your agenda tonight related to this, the firemen have practiced there and finished, and the only casualty we understand was Randy rescue. The houses are gone, and we heard that Sparrow's Nest was very thankful to receive everything salvageable out of the houses. The architectural plan should be finalized next week, going in for permit, and we hope to be in the ground by the middle of next month. And the utilities, we hope to have those completely finalized, anything particularly those with relationship to the city finalized within the next three weeks, so there's no impact on Wisconsin or on the park before we get into summer season.
And this is the first time that we've, this project is the first time that we've ever done construction within the city, and we've learned that it can be somewhat challenging process. But the city staff has been awesome, and specifically, we just wanted to say thank you to Craig Workman, who has been working very closely with us, Maria Butts, Bailey Minnick, and Joe Page, all of whom have, every time we've picked up the phone and said, "We have a question," or "Can we stop by your office?" They've all been ultra-willing to just drop everything and work with us on that. So, we really appreciate it. And of course, Angela Jacobs, who has been reviewing the easements for tonight's agenda.
Thanks, folks.
My name's, excuse me, my name's Ryan Polcorni, 485 Third Avenue West North in Kalispell. I'm here as a partner of Lake Shore Group LLC discussing WLP 17- W06, which is going to be considered further down the agenda. I don't have much to say in public comment. The city staff has done an excellent job of laying out the facts and where we stand with respect to the regulations. So, I just wanted to make the council known that I'm here, and when it's discussed down the road, feel free to call on me. I can answer to any existing conditions, any questions.
Great. And your name, Ryan, again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Thanks for sticking around. Further public comment tonight? Not seeing any. We'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports tonight from the audience? Not seeing any. How about the council? And we'll start with Richard.
Bike Ped met this morning. And first of all, Bruce Booty provided us with a revised plan for the BNSF Roundhouse Park, and the park, or the Bike Ped Committee unanimously voted to send it on to the park board for approval, or any adjustments that they might see. But this is a major shift and completion of a big project, so hopefully this summer we'll see some things happen down there to make that spot more usable. It'll be at really no cost to us, because those monies are, funds are already available. Mark your calendars. Rose Madison, who is our high school representative on the Bike Ped Committee, reported that May 15th through the 19th is Bike to Work Week. So, she, and I don't understand, because I don't do Instagram, but she said that there's going to be an Instagram competition with, in conjunction with Bike to Work. So, if you're out there on whatever public media, social media that is, somebody tell me. So, anyway, that's going on. But along with that, May 19th, there'll be a free bike check station at the O'Shaughnessy, and so you can bike into the O'Shaughnessy on your way to work in the morning and have a free cup of coffee and get your bike at least looked over, and somebody can, some bike mechanics will be there and give you a quick rundown on your bicycle. May 17th, for those who are still marking their calendars, is back to school day with prizes. So, those of you traveling out and about, be sure to watch for the kiddos as they're biking back and forth to school on that day. And if you've ever watched this happen, the bus, or the bicycle parking area at Muldown is just absolutely chocolate block full of kids' bicycles, and it's a really neat thing to see. Along with that will be a commuter challenge with, in conjunction with Bike Walk Montana. There are various landscaping projects underway, particularly with regards to Seventh Street, West Seventh Street, and the bike path. Something that came up that the Bike Ped Committee also voted to approve, and that is a, the development of an e-bike policy that is battery-powered bicycles. There are two classifications, type one and a type two. A type one is a pedal assist, and the other is not. It's a throttle control, neither one of which can go over 20 miles an hour. But the recommendation was that we develop a resolution to permit that kind of use on our bike paths. The end.
Thanks, Richard. Any further volunteer board reports? Katie?
Two different board reports. LLAC meeting, or committee, Legacy Land Advisory Committee met last Monday, and they are moving forward with groundbreaking this week, if you believe, for the Haskell Basin Trail. And there will be a Pints with Purpose Thursday at Bonzai. So, spend, buy some beer and donate a dollar to Whitefish Legacy Partners. And then the 911 Board met last Wednesday as well. We are working still with Kalispell to try to come to agreements with the inter-local agreement. We're waiting to get the notes back from the Kalispell City Council to see where we can make amends with coming to an agreement. And there was a vote to slightly increase payment by municipalities within the inter-local agreement at 3.54%.
Great. Thanks, Katie. One, I think correction is, I think it's Tuesday, May 9th, is the groundbreaking ceremony for Haskell, and I believe folks are meeting at 5:00 PM at Bonzai Brewing Company. What's that? And there'll be a bus to shuttle people back and forth to the new trailhead. And I really hope some of our major donors, some of which are here tonight, can attend that meet, that groundbreaking event next Tuesday. It'll be an exciting time. And then finally, I know on behalf of Whitefish Legacy Partners, we held a meeting with Matt Jones, the BNSF Public Relations Officer, and Heidi reviewed the proposed bridge crossing location that'll connect North Beaver to Lazy and then ultimately Swift Creek. I believe it was a field meeting. She said that that meeting went very well, and she's going to be working with, obviously, the city as well as the BNSF rep. And I don't know, Maria, were you at that meeting? You weren't? Okay. So, I don't know if Heidi circled back with you, but I think it would be important for her to update you on how that meeting went.
Alan did come to the Bike Ped Committee meeting, and he updated the Bike Ped Committee on that.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Richard?
I forgot one thing, and that is that the Climate Action Plan Committee meets tomorrow at 5:00 here.
Great. Thanks, Richard. Further reports? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any changes or addition to the April 17th meeting minutes, or can I have a motion for approval? Andy?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion was seconded by Councilor Franzen. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign, and that's unanimous. Michelle, we'll move on to our public hearings. Item seven on our agenda tonight. We do have three public hearings. We'll start with item 7A, which is consideration of a request from Marielle Behrens, and I hope I pronounced that correctly, for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment at 553 Park Avenue. And this is on page 207 of your packet, and I don't think I pronounced that correctly, and I apologize. Bailey?
It's all good. So, as the mayor said, this is a request for a conditional use permit in order to construct an accessory apartment at 553 Park Avenue. The accessory apartment would be adjacent to an existing single-family residence. It would be located above a garage towards the middle kind of rear of the subject property. The majority of the existing garage that is currently on-site would be removed, although the applicant is hoping to use a portion of the garage in the construction of the new garage and accessory apartment. But that'll depend on the building inspector and if it's structurally sound and able to do that, which is during the building permit review. But the proposed new car garage would be 22 feet wide by 24, excuse me, 27 feet long. It would be, the accessory apartment would be constructed above the garage and would be set back from the side property lines, the minimum of six feet. They also are proposing an unenclosed deck that would be off the rear of the property, that would be approximately six feet wide by the length of the building, or 27 feet long. So, the building would be set back, minimum of 34 feet from the rear property line, which is along the alley to the east, six feet along the southern side property line, and then 17 feet on the northern side property line. And the garage would be accessed from the existing alley on the rear of the property. However, there is an existing driveway that is currently located off of Park Avenue. So, the subject property is 6,500 square feet, so it meets our minimum lot size. As I said, it's developed with a single-family residence currently. It is zone WR2, which is our two-family residential district, and the growth policy does designate this area as urban, which does correspond to our WR2. We did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners within 150 feet of the property on March 31st. We emailed advisory agencies, and we did place a legal in the paper on April 5th, and I've received no comments on this proposal at all. So, just hitting some highlights in the criteria, the proposal for the accessory apartment does appear to meet our requirements and is consistent with the purpose and intent of the regulations. The accessory apartment would meet or exceed the setbacks required for accessory apartments, since the building footprint would be less than 600 square feet. There are some proposed stairs that are going to be on the southern side of the structure, but according to one of our regulations, we do allow uncovered, open-air access ramps and stairs, no wider than four feet, to encroach into that setback when they're providing the primary access to the door. So, it does comply with both our minimum lot size and lot widths in the WR2 as well. As I said, the garage would be accessed from a private driveway extending from the public alley in the back. The existing driveway along the southern side property line, it, they are proposing to keep that driveway for their own parking use. However, the way the garage will be situated on the property, it won't, they won't be able to utilize that driveway in order to access into the garage. So, they are proposing to keep it. It is already paved and will provide more parking for their use. So, they are required to have two parking spaces for the single-family dwelling, as well as one off-street parking space for the accessory apartment, and they do appear to be able to meet that on-site with the garage parking, as well as the existing driveway and the paved area in the back. Traffic impacts are anticipated to be minimal, since it has an existing single-family residence. It's located within an existing neighborhood with similar uses. It shouldn't result in any significant impacts to Park Avenue or any of the surrounding roadways. As I said, the accessory apartment would meet the lot coverage and the height requirements. It would be similar to many of the adjacent uses in those neighborhoods. I've seen a lot of these coming in, in Columbia Avenue, Kalispell Summers Park. So, there's a lot of them going on over in that area, and it doesn't, it's not anticipated to impact or change the character of the district in that area. So, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with 10 conditions that we attached. The planning board met on April 20th and considered the request. The applicant spoke at the public hearing, but there were no members of the public that spoke as well, and the draft minutes were attached as part of your packet. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application to the city council, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey?
Okay.
Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 7A, and we will hold that public hearing now. Is the applicant here? And do you wish to address the council?
No, I appreciate it.
Good. Thank you. Further public testimony on this item? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion. Frank?
I would move to approve WCUP 1705, the findings of fact and the staff report and the 10 conditions of approval as recommended by Whitefish Planning Board on April 20th, 2017.
Second?
There is a motion on the table to approve item 7A. That has been seconded by Councilor Franzen. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign, and that's unanimous as well. Michelle? Thanks very much. How do you pronounce your name, I have to ask?
Mariah.
Mariah. Apologies. We'll move on to item 7B, which will be our own ordinance 17-19 and ordinance rezoning approximately 10 acres of land along Armory Road, known as Track 1 and Track 2 of COS 20471 in Section 32 and Section 33, Township 31 North, Range 21 West in Flathead County, Montana, from County SAG 5, which is their suburban agricultural district, to our own Montana, from County SAG 5, which is their suburban agricultural district, to our own Whitefish WCR, our country residential district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone. Bailey?
It's a long thing to have to read there. The short version, the city is requesting a zone change on two parcels from County SAG 5, suburban agricultural, to WCR, the country residential district. The parcels are located between Dodger Lane and John's Way on the north side of Armory Road, and the parcels are now currently in the city limits. The purpose of rezoning the properties is due to Resolution 1712 and 1713, which annexed the properties into Whitefish city limits on March 20th, 2017. Since the properties are now within the city, we have to change it to a city designation. I did want to make a comment for people listening or in the audience, that today's paper did say it was an intent to annex the properties, but they have been annexed on March 20th. So just to make that comment out there. There is a comparison between the WCR and the SAG 5. It's on page 247 of your packet, if you wanted to see the comparison between the two. The subject properties combined total approximately 10 acres, they're two five-acre tracts. The growth, they are currently vacant. The growth policy does identify them as rural residential, which does correspond to WCR and a WA10 district, and we don't have a WA10 district, so the WCR is our closest equivalent. And kind of just a note, so prior to 2014, or the termination with the interlocal agreement, these properties were zoned SAG 10. They were never zoned or changed into a city-designated zone. In 2016, the county did approve a zone change from the SAG 10 to the SAG 5, and the closest equivalent we have to a SAG 5 zone is the WCR, which is the two-and-a-half acre minimum. So we did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners on March 31st, placed a legal in the paper and noticed advisory agencies. I have had a few questions about future development proposals. We've had nothing submitted at this time, and I've had no formal comments received, just some curious questions about what was going on. So we did review the request in accordance with our criteria for rezoning. I can go into those in more detail if you want later. I'll try to kind of skip in the highlights here for you, since we've seen a lot of these lately. Staff is recommending approval of the rezone. The planning board met on April 20th and considered the request. There were no members of the public that spoke at that meeting, and I did attach the draft minutes for you all to read. And then following the public hearing, the planning board did unanimously recommend approval of the request to the City Council. So I'm happy to go into more criteria if you would like, or answer any questions.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be ordinance 17-19, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Any public testimony? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Jen?
I'll move to approve ordinance 17-19, the Whitefish Zone Change 17-15, the findings of fact and the staff report as recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board on April 20th, 2017.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that again carries unanimously. Michelle? Which brings us quickly on to item 7C, which will be our own ordinance 17-20, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter II, Section IV, prohibited and restricted parking to establish parking restrictions for the new public parking facility located at East Second Street and Baker Avenue, also known as our parking structure associated with City Hall. And this is on page 266 of your packet. Angie?
Good evening. Pardon me. My staff report is on page 270 of the packet. As you heard from Mike, we are nearing completion of our public parking facility that's attached to City Hall. And as you're probably also aware, to generate the revenue required to cover the annual operation and maintenance, we decided to lease parking spots in the parking facility. And I know you guys have probably been through way too many work sessions on this, so I won't reiterate your work sessions, but I will say that I believe that you can start to purchase parking passes in May? Today? Oh, today. So we decide, or I decided, our code is very, very specific about no parking zones and restricted parking zones. And although I think we can enforce parking as our code exists now, I think it's important to have the public know exactly what you can and can't do. So I just revised our no parking ordinance and made it clear that it's unlawful for a person that doesn't have a parking permit to park in leased parking during the leased parking hours. To make it unlawful to park in unleased parking for more than three hours, and to make it unlawful to park large commercial vehicles, or for anybody to park for more than seven days in the parking structure. So the financial requirements impacts will probably be positive because we'll have more tickets. So I can answer any questions you want.
Thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie on the text amendments? Richard?
Is, in other, someplace else covered that somebody would show up in their van and say, "Well, I'm going to camp in here for seven days"?
Well, yeah. I mean, there's other parts of the code that generally prohibit that, but we do have, and we have in the code that, you know, parking's prohibited where it's officially signed to be prohibited or restricted. And so I think we can enforce that, you know, certainly, but it's just our code is so strange in that it really sets out exactly where parking is restricted, exactly where it's prohibited, the hours it is. So I think it's a matter of public policy and, you know, having the public know what is and what isn't unlawful, it's important that we actually put the exact language in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Katie?
Really quick, real quick question on definition. What constitutes a large commercial vehicle?
Really large? You know, there's-
A big truck!
Yeah, a big truck. You know, there are definitions in federal law of like, not a large commercial vehicle, but commercial vehicles, but, I mean, I think that's kind of a matter of police discretion. I don't think it's necessarily something we need to define. It's kind of one of those, you know it when you see it, sort of.
Further questions? Comments? I had one question, and I hesitate on bringing this up, but obviously the city's going to be leasing upwards of, you know, 40, you know, spaces in the new structure, and I would find it hard to believe that at times our own city vehicles may in fact be parked in one space for longer than seven days if it's not being utilized or if it's between the Christmas and New Year holiday, et cetera. Is that a concern that we need to somehow refer to with these text amendments?
I, I mean, I guess I can't really talk about the city vehicles themselves and how long or when or where they might be parked and for how long maybe Craig or Maria, you know, departments actually have city vehicles can weigh in on that, but I don't see it as a big concern.
Okay. I guess you don't either. I know it's a minor detail, but inevitably we'll probably get asked if there are city vehicles parked for longer than seven days, why they're allowed to and why the public's not. So I have to ask the question.
Yeah, I think we should, I mean, we've specifically noted in these final phases of the project, how many vehicles each department's going to need and how many leased spaces we'll have. Between each of our staff, I think that we'll have to work together as we actually start parking there. If there are employees that have dedicated vehicles that are going on vacation, perhaps we take those vehicles and put them up at the shop, you know, at the city shop for the week, or have somebody else drive the vehicle so that it does get out and move. But yeah, no, I think you're right. We do need to be cognizant of following our own rules.
And that's all I'm asking, and I'm sure you will. I have no doubt about that. Further questions for Angie? Richard?
I'm going to make a motion.
We need to hold a public hearing first-
Oh, yeah.
-which we will do now on ordinance 17-20. Any public comment tonight on this item? Jim, Lisa? You not dying to provide comment? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Richard?
Now I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 17-20 to amend Title VI, Chapter II, Section IV, prohibited and restricted parking to establish parking restrictions for the public parking facility located at East Second Street and Baker Avenue on the first reading.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Was seconded by Counselor Franzen. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries as well unanimously. Michelle? We will move on to item 8A, which will be consideration of approving an application from Lake Shore Group LLC for a Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore permit at 1340 Wisconsin Avenue for gravel placement in the Lake and Lake Shore Protection Zone. And I think the common theme for the next, for this and item 8B is obviously the Lake Shore Committee's concerned with placement of gravel in the Lake Shore Zone. So feel free, Bailey, if you just want to elaborate on the first agenda item, we can carry those comments forward for the second item.
Okay. Do you want, yeah, I can, let me grab a second. I'm trying to keep you over today now.
Whatever's easier for you, just-
All the time. I can kind of talk about them, actually, because it's pretty much almost the same presentation for both.
Exactly. So I just want to save you from having to do it twice.
I'm happy to do that. So, so this is regarding WLP 17-WO6. So the applicant is proposing to place gravel within the Lake and Lake Shore Protection Zone. The activity would include the placement of approximately 10 cubic yards of gravel to their existing gravel beach. And based off my research and going back through all of our previous Lake Shore permits, this would be the first request for gravel placement on this property. As a side note, it's, it's not per property owner, it's just per the property forever, back to the beginning of the Lake Shore regulations. So the requested amount of gravel, it is within the allowable amount based on their linear feet of Lake Shore frontage. And this property is currently under construction with a fourplex building between Wildwood Condos and the Whitefish Lake Lodge. Denman Construction is doing the work down there. I'm sure you've seen it if you've driven by. So staff recommended approval of the Lake Shore permit dated April 12th, subject to 14 conditions. The Lake Shore Committee met on April 12th and considered the request. No members of the public spoke at that meeting. I did include the draft minutes for you guys to review. Following staff's presentation, the committee did vote unanimously to recommend denial of the request. So I'm going to kind of go into a staff analysis and hopefully try to explain kind of what happened and kind of what, what the options are moving forward. So the current Lake Shore regulations permit the addition of gravel on a case-by-case basis. There are seven criteria listed in the regulations, and I did put those criteria in the transmittal letter to you on page 272 of your report. So there's seven criteria that have to be met in order for us to recommend approval of the application. In making their decision, and hopefully if you read the minutes, you can kind of see the trend, but most of their concern and their discussion focused on the number of applications that we have received over the past few years. And some of the members felt that the lake and the Lake Shore should be more diverse and that not every property owner should be necessarily allowed to have gravel application if they don't, if they felt that they didn't, they didn't need it. So they also had some discussion on the speculation on the original intent of the regulations. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of the original intent of what was behind adding that, that criteria and those standards into the Lake Shore regulations. Jim Stack is a wonderful person that happens to be here tonight, who I'm sure could give us wonderful more information on that. So surprise, Jim. So staff-
That's why I didn't rearrange the agenda and put you earlier.
So staff does have some concerns with the committees, or staff, I do concur with a lot of the committee's concerns. However, the discussion that occurred during the middle of these items necessarily shouldn't have really happened during the middle of these items because it needed to really focus on the merits of this project relating to the criteria and not just the general feeling of whether we want gravel in the Lake Shore or not. The current criteria, they don't, it doesn't list anything aesthetically values of it or evaluating historical gravel, gravel placement in the lake and what that may be, how that may be affecting our lake. And we don't have a lot of information on that either. So we reviewed the request in accordance with the criteria that we do have in the regulations, and we did find that, that it met those criteria, and so that's why staff was recommending approval. So I did complete a second site visit after the committee meeting, just to again go out and verify that what they were proposing is what was allowed. And so I did attach a number of my pictures from that, from that site visit to that, so you could see kind of what we were looking at. There is, there is existing gravel in that Lake Shore. A lot of the gravel has been covered by some falling debris material. There are a number of huge willows that are out there. This project property has been vacant for years. It's had nobody maintaining it. So there is a lot of vegetation that has fallen on top of the gravel, so I could see why it looks like there isn't gravel out there to put it on, but there is a number of gravel out there. As well as it is, it is kind of hard to tell where the high water mark is. It is staked right now because they are doing the construction work and with our water quality protection ordinance, they do have all those things staked in the silt fence and everything's out there. So it's actually really easy to see, if you're out there on site, where the high-water stake is, where they would be able to place the gravel and where it's not permitted to. So farther out where this property is marshier and muddier is not where the gravel would be allowed to go. So some, there is some discussion of whether the gravel would alleviate that, and it wouldn't. It would be placed further inlandward where it would, where there is the existing gravel at. So staff, myself, Dave, I mean, we do agree that a more thorough view of this criteria, of these criteria may be necessary if this is the feeling that we have, that the council, if they agree with the Lake Shore Committee and feels that maybe we do need some additional criteria. Maybe that is something that we want to look at, but we need to go through and add additional criteria later on with the text amendment and be reviewing the applications under the current regulations and the current criteria we have. So I'm not disagreeing with the Lake Shore Committee. I want you all to know that, that it's not a, I'm, I'm different than what they're, they're thinking. It's just, this is the criteria we have to review it by currently. So I did also include, just for your information, on page 275, I did include a small table that I came up. I did going, I searched all the way back to 2006, so roughly over 10 years, how many gravel applications we have had. And just so you know, all of these have been approved. Now whether that means ones that didn't meet these criteria, never even came in to apply, but these are all ones that were submitted and were approved. And obviously I stopped in the last 10 years. I'm sure I could have gone back further and maybe found some that were denied, but these, all the ones within the last 10 years have been approved. So, so in conclusion, I mean, we, staff continues to recommend approval of the applications. I did provide both a proposed finding for denial as well as a proposed finding for approval, trying to give you a finding of fact to, to do for both, because the Lake Shore Committee unfortunately didn't propose a draft finding for denial. So, so those are my proposed draft findings. And then, since I, it's kind of the same topic, I'll switch to the second permit, which is for Brian and Lori Alter. It's WLP 1707. So this applicant was proposing three projects. One was the installation of stone veneer on the face of an existing concrete retaining wall, the installation of some stone stairs extending from the retaining wall downward into the Lake Shore protect, or into the lake, and then also the placement of gravel within the Lake Shore Protection Zone. And this property is currently developed with a residential structure. So, and I can discuss the stone veneer. It looked like this retaining wall was permitted, can't remember exactly off the top of my head, when, uh, I think it was like 2004-ish, maybe even further. But at some point when they did it with three properties next to each other, they did one big retaining wall for it. Two of the properties came back in later and asked for stone veneer and received a permit. For some reason, this property was not part of that. Under our current regulations, we do like to see the concrete covered with either riprap, dry sack, so, something to make it so it's not a concrete retaining wall. So they are coming back and asking to do it at this time. And then the stone stairs, we do allow stairs down into the Lake Shore Protection Zone, but they can only be a maximum of four feet wide. The proposed stairs that they had shown were bigger than that, so I did add a condition, it was condition number 12, that these stone stairs could only be four feet wide. But we do count all of that into their constructed area allowance, and they were meeting all the requirements for that. So, and then I can talk about the gravel here in a second. The, so staff did recommend approval of the application with 22 conditions. This project did go to the Lake Shore Protection Committee on April 12th as well. The applicant's contractor spoke at the meeting, and I also included the draft minutes for you. So following staff's presentation and some discussion with the applicant's contractor, the Lake Shore Committee, they recommended unanimously approval, but with two amendments. And one was recommended approv, previously, wow, I can't talk now, unanimously, and that was to deny the gravel placement within the Lake Shore Protection Zone. And then the second one was to strike the first sentence of condition 13, which I do support. When I added the condition that the stairs be a maximum of four feet wide, I missed on condition 13, I have that the stair, stairs- on condition thirteen, I have that the stair, stairs would be located as shown on their application site plan, their project drawing, which are too big. So I do recommend striking that condition, no matter which way we go. So, again, the Lake Shore Committee, following the first request, or the, the Lake Shore Group, the previous one I discussed, they felt a lot of the same kind of things. They discussed it a lot more, again, is why, you know, this property, obviously from the pictures, you can see it, it has gravel. And so they were really asking the applicant, well, why do you need more? And, and why isn't that enough already? And the applicant, you know, they did state that it was thinning out in some areas, they would like to redistribute it. They're only asking for five cubic yards of gravel, so half of what the previous application was. It's still within what they're allowed to do, but it is a much smaller amount of gravel. And so a lot of it was focused on, again, some of those previous discussions of do we want to keep allowing gravel in the Lake Shore, and, and kind of those lines as well. So, yeah, I guess in conclusion, we, we are recommending approval of the entire application of this one as well. It does meet the criteria, again, for the gravel placement. And I do request striking that first sentence in condition thirteen, either way we go. So, I can try to answer questions. Hopefully it was, made sense.
Thanks Bailey. We will hold two separate public, excuse me, we don't need public hearings with this, but we'll act on these separately. But for now, do you, are there any questions for Bailey on either item? Richard?
Bailey, on the Lake Shore Group LLC request, when that was first approved, there was some discussion about how flat that is and the distance to the lake. Are they going to run into issues if they increase, as they, just to try and get to the lake, end up with so much constructed area that they wouldn't be able to?
Oh, well, we don't count the gravel in the constructed area allowance. So it shouldn't actually trigger any constructed area allowance right now. They do have a dock that is permitted, and that is included in their constructed area. So that would, but the gravel, we don't count. We count stairs. We do count bigger dry set stone and retaining walls than that, but the gravel placement itself, we wouldn't count in the constructed area.
Okay. So if they put native rock lily pads, that would be constructed area?
Mm-hmm. Yep. But if it's gravel or mulch, we don't count those. But we have, it is stated in the regulations that we consider, you know, big four-foot wide dry set stones are counted into that constructed area allowance. Again, I don't know the intent behind that, but that's what it says.
It's, it's to try to limit the impervious area within the Lake Shore Protection Zone to maximize infiltration.
Probably the smaller, the better.
The next question is, the one that was, the beach was apparently thinning.
Oh, the second one.
Second one.
The Alter property.
Would that be an indication that it is subject to condition number two, that says wave action and/or currents are an issue, or not, in your opinion?
It could, but considering the amount that they've, that they have there, they've never asked for the request either. So, my guess, it's been there since that property was developed, maybe even longer. It is on that portion, kind of the top of Monks Bay, so I'm not really seeing, I wouldn't think, a lot of wave action or things like that. The most I could see is, again, I mean, it's kind of, you're in the Monks Bay where the, the lodge is, I mean, there's a lot of boating activity, especially with the bigger wake boats, that could be causing more of it. But it doesn't appear, I think it's just over time. It's just, it's just naturally doing it.
Okay.
So, but that's, I'm not a hydrologist, or, so, you know, that's, take that with a grain of salt.
Further questions for Bailey? Let's act individually on these. Further discussion or a motion on item eight A? I guess I'll just, I'll chime in here, and maybe it's a message back to the Lake Shore Committee, but I strongly feel that when applicants come forward in good faith with an application that meets the criteria, there's no variance request being made. We've seen this as precedent in the past, having ten applications of similar requests over the past five years, and it clearly meets the intent of the regulations. And I think it's important as a city that we put out what our rules and regulations are, so it's very clear for people that want to do work within the city that we have clear regulations that are followed. In this case, I do think they are being followed, and I don't think they provided any findings to justify denial, so it's, it's kind of borderline a bit arbitrary, in my opinion. But with that said, I think if the council does have concern with this trend that seems to be increasing with requests to place gravel, I think it's perfectly reasonable to request planning staff work with the Lake Shore Committee to look at those, those criteria and come back with a recommendation to the council. So with that said, we'll take a motion on item eight A.
I would move to approve the Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore Permit seventeen dash W oh six at thirteen forty Wisconsin Avenue for gravel placement in the Lake and Lake Shore Protection Zone dated April twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, subject to fourteen conditions. And the finding of fact as follows, the proposed application of gravel to the existing shoreline does comply with the standards outlined in the Lake Shore Regulations, and therefore the council approves the Lake Shore Construction Permit WLP dash seventeen dash W oh six.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Further discussion on the motion? Andy?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and one of these will pertain to the next application also. What I agree with Mayor, we have rules and regulations, and when we have people applying good faith, I think we need to also apply those rules in good faith. And while I appreciate the Lake Shore Committee's discussion, I don't think they really had grounds to deny it based on that discussion. But I think one thing we do have to look at going into the future is one of the criteria in there is areas subject to wave action, which was always typically a function of north, northwest storms coming down the lake. I, short-term, high, you know, high-intensity cyclonic storms in the summer, Ie thunderstorms, and that was what was generally the cause of that one we had to look at. But Lake Shore managers nationwide are now dealing with bladder boats. And bladder boats create a huge amount of wake, and suddenly everywhere in the lake is subjected to a lot more wave action than it was in the past. And I can tell you, having been in my house for thirty years, trying to sit on my dock at six o'clock in the evening and have a beer is virtually impossible anymore because of the wave action. And so I think it is something we're going to have to take a look at, and I think people talking about seeing more erosion on their shorelines is a direct result of that.
Good points. Thank you. Thanks, Andy. Further comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously. Thanks for coming up this evening, Ryan. We'll move on to item eight B. We'll need a motion as well on this item. Jen?
I would move to approve Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore Permit WLP seventeen dash W oh seven dated April twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, subject to twenty-two conditions set forth in the staff report, striking the first sentence of condition number thirteen.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that's again unanimous. Thanks Bailey. We'll move on to item ten A, since we are postponing item eight C and nine A, and that will be our own resolution seventeen dash twenty, a resolution granting a waterline easement to Last Best Place Investments LLC, accepting a new sanitary sewer line easement from Last Best Place Investments LLC, and abandoning, abandoning an existing sanitary sewer line easement. And this is on page three fifty-four. Angie?
Good evening again. My staff report begins on page three seventy-three. On April third of this year, the City Council granted Last Best Place Investments a conditional use permit to construct a professional office building at six fifteen and six twenty-five Wisconsin Avenue. And Stumptown Ice Den, Stumptown Ice Den in Mountain Trails Park lie to the north of the proposed development site. And in order to avoid having to cross Wisconsin and dig up Wisconsin and disrupt traffic, Last Best Place Investments requested that the city granted an easement across the Stumptown Den and Mountain Trails property. And they would, that would allow them to connect into a water main that's loaded, located on the north side of Stumptown Ice Den. And I, my understanding is they intend to hydraulically drill in their water line. It's not going to disrupt park property, park operations, or any of the trees there. And it would be easily, easily accessible for them. And again, it wouldn't, it would, you know, keep them from having to dig up Wisconsin. They've also requested that the city allow it to relocate an existing sewer line easement. They're going to replace some old sewer line, and that would actually benefit Stumptown Ice Den and Mountain Trails Park as well. So Robert Peshen Associates have submitted the construction drawings. They've also submitted a waterline easement from the city Whitefish, and sanitary sewer easement to the city Whitefish, and release of easement, both of which I've reviewed and are acceptable. And the park board unanimously agreed to recommend approval of the requested easements. And staff also recommends approval. And I can answer any questions, or Jim and Lisa, can you answer any questions you might have?
Thanks Angie. Any questions for Angie or the applicant? Not seeing any. Motion please. Richard?
I'll go ahead and move to approve Resolution seventeen dash two zero, a resolution granting a waterline easement to Last Best Place Investments LLC, accepting a new sanitary sewer line easement from Last Best Place Investments LLC, and abandoning an existing sanitary sewer line easement.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Barbaris. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that's again unanimous. Michelle? Good luck. You're closer.
Step by step.
Thanks for attending tonight. We will move on to item eleven A, which is Adam's written report, which is enclosed with your packet. Any questions for Adam? Adam, any additional items to report on?
Yes. I filled this out on a Tuesday, and by Thursday, you could almost scratch it all out. First, we'll start with the city hall and the parking structure. Due to the rain and various things, you know, as Mike talked about earlier, they're just unable to do a lot of the exterior things. And there's a, there's an order that has to be followed in order to carry everything out. And when one thing gets delayed, they all get delayed. And so one of the things that I spoke over several meetings with Martell about is providing them a little more time in order to get it done. And my feeling is, as long as we're not running up into Memorial Day, I think we're fine. I'd like to stay away from having, you know, people come to city hall and have to walk around scaffolding, or be fearful of, of some kind of accident or things of that nature. So I'd like to have as much of the project done as possible. So we did decide to grant them some extra time. So we're bumping our move dates to the next week. So when we had a May twelfth closing date for the city hall here, it's now going to be May nineteenth. We are going to be moving over there on the seventeenth, eighteenth, and then on the nineteenth is when we move all of our IT stuff and receipting and, and things of that nature. It also does bump a few other things. We're going to do our open house. It was originally called for May nineteenth. We're going to bump that to June fifth. So right before our council meeting that night, so probably three to five thirty, we will do it. So the same time that we had before, but we'll just bump it to June fifth. We will be closing city hall at three o'clock that day, just to make sure that we can get people through, through on the tours and all of that kind of stuff. So we're going to be putting an agenda together for that day. So hopefully that works out for everyone as well. Parking lease update. Parking did go live. We have, I'm not going to include the cities in there, but we've had about forty already today. So I'm hopeful that that just continues. My, my hope is that we just sell out, although I don't want an extremely long waiting list. It means there's people that want to park, and we may not be able to. So depending on that, we'll, you know, we'll look at various things. I know in some of the writings, you know, that we put out there, that we reserve the right to oversell parking spaces. It doesn't necessarily mean that we will. It is standard practice in leasing parking structures that you do oversell in cases like this. So case in point, the city of Bozeman has a parking structure with four hundred and thirty-five spaces, and they rent out five hundred and fifty leases. So they're about twenty-five percent overselling. But what they do is, every couple of years, they do an analysis. They want to make sure that people don't pull in there with a permit and then not have a place to park as well. But on any given day, you know, there's a number of people that are out sick, or on vacation, or for other reasons, or traveling for work, or this, that, and the other. And so one of the things that we don't want to do is, you know, leave that parking structure half-full. So one of the intents of this parking structure is to maximize use for the benefit of downtown. And if that comes by overselling and not to the exclusion of people with permits, then that's probably what we're going to do. So that's why we did leave that there. But the council will all be involved. So my hope is that we can sell out this year without too much of a waiting list, and we can kind of do an analysis this year and see how things are going, and we can decide whether or not we want to lease out additional spots at the end of the, at the end of the season. You have at your spot the preliminary budget. I know staff and Dana and I have worked tirelessly to put this together, considering our, you know, our, our time has been spent on city hall quite a bit. But I want you to know, those are supplementary things that can begin our discussions. That also goes into our May thirtieth and June twelfth budget dates that are upcoming. Also wanted to update you on the Fire Marshal Assistant Fire Chief position. I know we're doing an internal search right now, and we had two applicants, and Chief Page is going to be conducting interviews tomorrow. And so we're hopeful that one of those will definitely rise to the top and measure up for what we're looking for. Also, I wanted everyone to know that I did sign the, the grant application for the state water land through the, that's working in conjunction with Legacy Partners. So they should be off to their races as far as their projects and things are going. And I know they anticipated this happening anyway, so I know they've been really moving forward over the previous month or so. And so I think great things are going to happen there. And I know on May ninth, we have a nice kickoff thing that you alluded to as well. Another thing that's moving forward is the affordable housing. We actually have a meeting this Thursday to continue that process, so very excited about that. Hopefully, we're going to yield some, some great things by the end of this process that we can actually carry out and tackle some of the problems that we're having.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate the update. Any questions or comments on Adam's update? Not seeing any. We will stay with Adam and go on to item eleven C, which in your staff report, Adam describes the need for hiring of a halftime administrative assistant for the fire department and increasing the parking attendant from halftime to a full-time position. Adam?
Yeah, one of the things that I always have to consider, so having been a, a manager through the recession, laying people off and trying to make cuts in everything is, is, you know, kind of, kind of tough to deal with. And so I always take adding employees very seriously. The last thing I want to do is start adding employees only to be laying them off down the road. I want to make sure that we add employees in such a way that, you know, there's a, you know, reasonable chance that they're going to be kept on staff. But there's a couple, so I know there's going to be some staffing changes that you'll see in your, in your budget. I think only one of the positions in there is actually a straight-up, hey, we just need another position in order to accomplish the things that we've been asked to do. All the rest of them have been jockeying things around in order to make them work, and this is, you know, a couple of those. So rather than get into the budget, which we'll have plenty of time to discuss, and there's some things you should read in there, I kind of want to just focus on these two. I generally would don't like to get ahead of the budget in hiring personnel, because essentially what I'm asking you to do now is hire these personnel, and then again, when the budget comes around, continue to keep them in the budget. So really, you're making a decision to hire these people and then keep them on the next year's budget. But I do kind of put a little bit of analysis out there. You know, the fire department is, is our, our largest department. They're the department without any administrative help whatsoever. And I know even when we had a Fire Marshal before, Chief Page's wife comes in and volunteers a ton of hours. And I know those hours are ever increasing. And while I appreciate volunteer help, this is really work that should be handled by city personnel. I think we're, we're well beyond the volunteer. Thank you so much for your few hours. When it turns into a ton of hours, it gets to be a little bit much. I know the, the difference in what was paid to the previous chief-turned-assistant chief Fire Marshal, there's a difference in pay between what Tom was making and what the new person will be making. And so even though the position, the annual cost is about twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, the actual, there's actually got net cost of, you know, I'm guessing maybe ten, ten thousand dollars, off the top of your head, Dana? So I mean, it's a little bit of an increase, but not much. But we're going to be able to get a halftime employee for not a whole lot of dollars. And rather than wait until July one, and I guess I'm hoping, and, and almost assuming this position gets approved as part of the budget, that we can make this happen now. There's a lot of things going on in the fire department, and we're getting behind on a lot of things, and, and just waiting until that time is just going to further exacerbate the problems. So that's the reason for that one. On the second one, we have, we have issues with other city facilities. And I know we've been talking about for some time, having someone on board that can address some of these things. So I know when we hired Dave Butts recently, he started at the beginning of March, that was- That was a planned hire in the fiscal seventeen budget. It was anticipated that he would come on and basically just take on the City Hall and parking structure, and there's a lot to that. There's a lot of square feet there, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of things that happen. But it was also, you know, we're hiring someone, or we expected to hire someone with a skillset in maintenance, and then we were also gonna have to train them in parking enforcement and other things that maybe they weren't. And so now that we have someone in place that really does have all of the experience and skills that we had hoped for, I really hate to not utilize that skillset to its fullest, especially when we have needs at a lot of other facilities. So the ESC is one of those facilities where we just have issues, you know, some of which are ongoing for some time now. And it would be very nice if we could get Dave Butts out there to the ESC and really all our other facilities that are having issues. This would avoid, I mean, if we could do some of this stuff in-house, it might be able to avoid some other costly repairs from going out or doing contract work or things of that nature. And he's got the skillset, and he's available and willing to do so. By so doing, we do need somebody to step in and fill in some of that role at the parking structure. So we do have Janie, who's our parking enforcement attendant, but because she's a part-time employee, we really only have parking enforcement in our downtown half of typical working hours. And so I have noticed people that pull up and park, and they pretty much stay there all day. You know, maybe they move here, maybe they move there. Hopefully, this parking structure will take on some of that. But knowing that we've got an automated system in the parking structure, we're gonna need someone that can respond and take care of issues that arrive there, whether it's somebody that's illegally parking in leased space or other things. And so one of the thoughts was is that if we were to bump Janie up to a full-time position, then we would be able to not only cover the parking structure, but we could cover all of downtown with a full-time person. We'd be able to vary her hours so that people don't say, oh, well, she's done working at five o'clock, so I can begin, you know, parking in leased spots early or something like that. So we'll be able to vary hours and do things. The other thing that comes with that, of course, you know, you could almost say that we're gonna be doubling the number of citations that go out. You put somebody out there forty hours versus twenty hours, and we're gonna have double a citation. So we are gonna increase this person half-time, and I believe it's about twenty-eight thousand dollars. But we believe, and I think we're very modest in this by saying that the revenue's gonna increase by half of that, or fourteen thousand dollars, it very well could increase more than that. So by bumping up these employees, we really don't have to pay the full brunt of the cost of that. The reason to bring Janie up earlier rather than later is June one begins our actual lease of the parking structure. So rather than wait until July one to take care of this, we thought it'd be best to do it on June one. I don't wanna have to train Dave Butts on how to write tickets and do all that only for one month. So we thought this would be a wise thing to do. But again, I go back to, you know, I'm asking you to approve these positions ahead of the budget, knowing that these positions are gonna have to stay, you know, as part of the budget, so without taking the budgets.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions or direction for Adam? Don't believe real direction is required. I think it's your discretion whether you feel these positions are necessary, but I think you made a great case for both. One question I did have is when we brought David Butts on, in terms of how to pay for that position, we justified part of his role at City Hall being directly, you know, TIF-related. So I believe half of his salary was gonna be paid for through TIF. Now that that position's transitioning to City Hall ESC, which was also paid for with TIF, do you see an opportunity to pay for more of that position out of TIF or more general property tax revenue? Or is that more of a budget discussion?
You know, we'll talk about this at budget more in depth, but the short answer is, TIF law will allow us to pay for certain salaries when it comes to construction capital-type projects out of TIF. Once it goes from a capital project to a maintenance issue, we really need to move the salary out of TIF.
Okay.
So we're gonna be splitting up his salary amongst a bunch of different departments, and all of that is reflected in your budget.
Great. Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. We will move on to communications from the mayor and city councilors. Pam, would you like to start?
I can listen.
Okay, thanks. Richard?
No, there was a third page.
Oh, that's right. It's the first time in so long we have a third page. Thought I was missing something. Item twelve A, discuss and set dates for our budget work sessions for FY eighteen budget for May thirtieth and June twelfth, and we also need to confirm the date for the preliminary public hearing on the budget for the June nineteenth meeting. And if I'm not mistaken, Adam, we do need a motion to this effect, correct?
Yes.
Setting the dates. If we could have that? Pam?
I would move to set the dates for our budget work sessions for the FY eighteen budget for May thirtieth and June twelfth, and the preliminary public hearing for the budget on the June nineteenth meeting.
Thanks, Pam. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous, Michelle. We'll move on to item twelve B, which will be our own resolution seventeen dash twenty-one, adopting our annual goals for the city via resolution. Katie?
I move to approve our Resolution seventeen dash twenty-one, a resolution establishing annual goals for the city.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Hildner. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously, Michelle. And similar to past years, we'll need to approve the conclusion governance letter from Denning Downey and Associates pursuant to their presentation and report this evening. Andy?
I would move that we approve the conclusions governance letter from Denning and Downey, sorry, and Associates.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney, further discussion? Andy?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I wanna congratulate Dana on all of her great accolades tonight. I know that they appreciate your work and research, and so, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Jen, did you have comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously, Michelle. And finally, our appointments from our work session this evening. I just wanted to, I think we made all of our appointments earlier. I'd just like to thank all of the applicants for the ARC. We appointed Scott Freidenberger and John Repke. The Resort Tax Monitoring Committee, Julia Oliveres, as well as Ken Stein, both incumbents. Park Board, we had incumbents Terry Dunn and Jimmy D. Herrera reapply and get appointments, as well as new applicant Eric Mattson. So welcome to our new park board member and our incumbents. And then finally, for our police commission, Jim Trout, who I believe has served close to or in excess of over twelve years. So thanks to all our volunteer members for stepping forward again this evening. And now, we will start with counselor comments. I know Pam is good. Richard, any comments?
No, go ahead.
Yes, I do. Pursuant to the discussion on gravel in the Lake Shore Protection Zone, I would like to see us ask the, or direct the Lake Shore Protection Committee to review the purpose and intent of gravel placement in the LPZ, along with the Planning Department. And if they could get to it as early as their May fourth, that'll be this Thursday's meeting, at least put it on their agenda, I would like to see that move forward. I think that Andy's point is well-taken, that the nature of wave action in the lake has altered dramatically in the last ten years, and certainly in the last five years with the advent of bladder boats, and that I think we need to reexamine, and perhaps they can propose some text amendments.
We'll just need a showing of hands, providing direction to planning staff to work with the Lake Shore Committee. And it looks like all are in favor. Richard?
Also, I, as you know, I was gone two weeks ago. I was traveling to the east, but I did tune in on Monday night, Jake, and the live broadcast, the live streaming, I wanted to commend everybody. You all looked great, and if you find yourself absent but where you can have a chance to livestream, it's worth the show. But well done, Jake.
Thanks, Richard. Katie?
I would just like to extend my praise and huge thanks to the Public Works Department. I found myself, for lack of better words, in a crappy situation about two weeks ago, and Chuck, Randy, Mitch, they were all, and Craig were all wonderful to work with, and they helped me through my sewer problems. And so, well done, and thank you so very much.
Thanks, Katie. Jen? Frank?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Andy?
I guess it's a procedural question for Adam, because we took no action on your request for the two positions, and you'd like that to happen prior to the end of this fiscal year, and we will need to see that as an agenda item in the future where, if we are inclined to act on it. I guess I would ask the council at what point they would like to be able to do that, if we do it in two weeks, or, 'cause otherwise this is gonna languish out there if it doesn't show back up on an agenda, and we say yes or no, so.
I apologize. I thought it was implied that we were providing him that authority, but certainly, if you'd like to see it as an agenda item, we can do that.
I, okay, I mean, I, or I mean, it's an agenda item now if you wanted to act as well.
Okay, so if you do need a motion, yeah, by all means.
I mean, I would assume it would take a motion, would it not?
Well, it definitely will for the new budget.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna be able to do it within the current budget that we have, so we're not gonna need a budget amendment for this purpose, although we'll need a budget amendment for other purposes. This is gonna be handled within the normal budget, but the two thousand and eighteen budget will, so I guess I'm just assuming that everyone's going to be good moving that forward, if I were to move forward the hiring. But, of course, it does make it a little more official and everything else if you were to, you know, lessen the motion and approval.
I guess then I would go ahead and move that we approve the two positions, one going to full-time and as the maintenance director's tasks will be so designated in the manager report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Franson to approve the two positions this evening, presented in Adam's staff report, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that is unanimous. Thanks, Andy. Anything further?
That's it.
I think it was our first day having our AIS station operational, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
That's right.
So I know it was a labor of love and a lot of labor, and so I just wanted to thank you, Maria, and your entire department. I know it took a heavy lift from your department, plus the Whitefish Lake Institute, and probably other departments as well, legal, public work, et cetera. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, and I cannot take that credit. Carla is absolutely amazing, and she has taken on so much work with that, as well as Mike and Lori from Whitefish Lake Institute. They've all done a really good job, so.
Great.
It went fairly smoothly, too.
Thanks to both of them. Richard?
How's Jake doing on the trail? Has he hit the trail yet?
We received a text message that he's still alive, so that's good.
Good.
And here's my mom's blog, and all is well. That's all we've gotten, very short, little.
Okay, thanks.
Still here.
Chief Diallo, are you still here? I have a quick question for you. It came up during our work session, if you don't mind, during our interviews. Obviously, we interviewed Jim Trout tonight for the police commission, and he was reappointed. And just through our talk with him, it came up that they hadn't met this year, the police commission hadn't met this year, and pursuant to Montana code, we looked that up, and it does ask that, or require that after June first, the police commission convene and appoint at a minimum a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary, and that the commission either meet every three months or at the call of the chairperson. So I don't know if that's a, if the commission is completely autonomous from yourself and your department, or is that something that you can require?
It is. It's autonomous for me, but in my fifteen years here, we've used them this many times, zero. Basically, therefore, statutorily, is if an officer is appealing a disciplinary issue, he can appeal it either to the police commission or district court. You know, we've been, we've been meeting for the last, oh, fourteen years, two or three times a year, and all it is is lunch.
Coffee.
Lunch. Yeah, you know, and we use them also in selection processes for officers, so, you know, and we can, we can meet, and, you know, I'll make sure it gets done.
Yeah, I think if we can just meet the intent of code, that would be great, just by making those appointments annually.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Okay, sure.
Great. Thanks, Chief Diallo. And on that note, I have nothing further, anything from council or staff? And we are adjourned. Thanks.
Ms.?